So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Richmond Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It looks like we definitely have a quorum, and we have a guest, Hi Gina. We have no one here in the studio except Duncan, the town assistant, to the town manager and myself, and Lisa is here in the studio or the town offices, so. All right, so we can get started. We'll go to our item number two, which is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? We did originally post an agenda that didn't have number five on it, but as I was going through all the materials, trying to make sure everything was completely correct to go to the select board, I noticed that the map that we had approved for the village RC district wasn't the most up-to-date map that we had. I was working from a combination of my files and Revy's files, and so the numbers got a little weird. So we have to look at this map again and make sure that this one is the correct one, and then I think it's significant enough that we should just vote to approve this map in exchange for the other map. So that was added to the agenda, but it's on the agenda now. So anybody else have anything else they want to add or change the agenda? Okay, yes.
What was the difference? I guess I didn't have the two maps?
I'll show, I'll tell you when we get there. Yep. And we'll be, we'll need to draw up the one, the map that was posted for our last meeting on Tuesday. We'll have, we'll need to have that available.
Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes. I can hear your image is kind of breaking up, but.
I don't know what's going on. I'm gonna turn off my video. Um, yeah, so sorry, I was on some kind of weird mute before. Um, I don't know if you got my email, but um, I am not able to stay for the entire meeting tonight. I, I wouldn't have come at all, but I noticed the point about the revote, so I'll be here for that, but then I have to depart unfortunately.
Oh, okay, so um, maybe we will start with that. And then come back to item number three and item number four. So we can start with item number five. All right, um, so thinking about these maps, the map that was approved at our February first meeting extended the village RC district partway up the east side of, no, not the gateway, we need a village, partway up the east side of the Jericho Road. And the map that I felt was the map that we wished to approve, but we can talk about that if anyone is confused about that, is one that has the east side of the Jericho Road or the southeast side of the Jericho Road extending all the way. Okay, so this is the old map. This is the map that we approved at our February first meeting. So you can see as you go up the Jericho Road, the entire west side is um, added to the RC district, but only half of the east side has been added. It goes up to kind of a rocky area. But we had talked about this at um, several previous meetings, and my notes say that the majority of people wanted it to go all the way up. There was no reason not to take it up to the I eighty-nine overpass. So this is the old me, oh, the old map. Now the new map Duncan is gonna put up, which is the one that we put in the meeting materials for this meeting. And you'll be able to see that the yellow on Jericho Road goes all the way up to I eighty-nine. So does anyone want to comment on this? Is it correct that this is the map that we want? And if so, I think we need to take another vote.
I definitely think this is what we were.
I can't really hear you. Is that Chris?
Well, I'm sorry, Chris, our time, Mark, go ahead. Okay, sorry, but I guess I should have raised my hand. But uh, I would say that uh, this map that is included in this packet was completely the map that I had in mind regarding what we would use for the, the village residential district there. Absolutely. So I uh, I'm, didn't even notice in the last packet that it didn't include that. It was just an assumption. This is definitely what I had in my brain the whole, the whole time.
Yeah, well, I have to say I didn't even notice that that was the map that we had included in the last packet, because I thought that that was this map, however. All right, anybody else?
Virginia, is that um, extension of the district along the east side of Jericho Road the only difference between these two maps?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I share Mark's sentiment that the, that the one that we're currently looking at is, is what I thought we had agreed to.
Okay. Good. Any other comments?
Hi, Virginia, Virginia, Dan Mullen, I have a quick question, if I can get my back. The, the area down on Cochrane Road around the Round Church, the area on Bridge Street around the Round Church and going down Far, my understanding is that, or going down Thompson, my understanding is that that's gonna be part of a separate district that has certain maybe characteristics because it has the view of the Round Church?
So in the last work that we did on the village residential district or village residential neighborhood south, Thompson Road was included. The four corners of the Bridge Street Huntington Road, Cochrane Road, Thompson Road were included in the neighborhood's South District. So if you look at the Round Church Corners Complex, which is in white, below that those properties are already in the residential commercial district. The, the ones just below that, the ones above it, can you move your map up a little? Okay. So you can see below where it says Far Road, those properties were already in the RC district. The ones on the other side of the Huntington Road were not. Those five lots are ones that we are proposing and have been all along proposing to add to the RC district. All the other parcels in that area are going to go into the neighborhood district.
Okay, thank you for re-clarifying that.
Yep. Allison, do you wanna?
Yes, no, I think this is the map that I had too.
Okay. Very good. So is there anybody who is opposed to this being the map that we're going to revote to approve? Okay, so I'm not hearing any comments, so um, what I would like is for someone to make a motion that we revoke just this map and in exchange for the other map based on an error. Okay, Lisa's making a motion.
Yeah, I'm sure. I moved that the planning commission approve the map that we're looking at, which includes the area in the district east of Jericho Road. Uh, that was not included before, uh, and we discontinued using the previous map that was approved previously.
Okay, so Lisa has made a mo- motion to approve this map um, as part of our package. Seconded by Allison. Okay, all in.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that, that this be referred to as the uh, map dated February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. That was Chris, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I'll second that.
See, it's, I put a date on it so that we would, or Duncan put the date on it for me. We put a date on it so we could have it dated. Map originated quite a while back.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, I think I would accept the amendment.
Oh, okay. The amendment, Allison, you accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay, friendly amendment added the um, legend of map dated two fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, all in favor of approving this motion should say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Was that Joy? Joy, are you here? Is Joy here?
Not seeing Joy. I see Gina, I don't know who Gina is.
Okay, so are, is, are there any opposed? Okay, seeing none, the motion is approved, and we will switch out this map or the other map in the packet that I am now ready to send to the planning commission, I mean, to the select board. Um, and the package will consist of the two maps, the two bylaw amendments that are required by state law, the clean copy of all the changes we're making, the complete Richmond zoning regulations markup, and oh, a letter explaining the changes to the select board, which they asked for. All right, that's great. So um, sorry about that. I think I have my files better under control now, but.
They call you Robbie?
No. Okay, and we continue, um, by the way, with our uh, interviewing of candidates for the planner job, but no conclusions so far. So, great, thanks for coming, Chris, and um, we'll go back to our agenda and look at number three, public comment on non-agenda items. Maybe Gina, do you have any comments on non-agenda items?
No, no comments at this time.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yep. And we'll move to number four on our agenda.
Comment. Erase my hands.
Yep.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say that um, previously we're talking about the view shed, and can we see Camel's Hump, and is that part of the gateway view shed? And um, I've been thinking a lot about how when you come into the gateway area, the thing you can see, like especially like on my way home from my other job tonight, that you can see um, the um, Cochrane ski area, and that's definitely like a wonderful part of the view of the gateway when you come into the gateway area, and um, I think um, if we could think about protecting that view, that would be great, because it's historical and it's a deep part of our community. I don't even ski. But you know, it does make me, it does make me feel proud of my community when I see it when I come home, so I just wanted to give my two cents on that. Thank you.
Do you know where you could see it from exactly?
Well, I think when you're coming off the highways in the, into the gateway, coming into um, Richmond. So like, I mean, it's lit up at night now, and I know that's only some part of the year. Um, but to be fair, wherever you are, when trees grow up, you can see or not see Camel's Hump or any other mountain view, so um, I know it's, it changes, but uh, you know, have you not, have you not seen it?
Well, so my recollection of where you can see it is coming down off the highway. And then, you know, there's a sort of a level part, you probably remember this too, Lisa, there's a level part along in front of the crate escape and the field stone building that you might be able to see it, but then the ground dips down and turns around to the south, and a hill rises up behind the Willis Farm with trees on it, and you lose all the views at that point, so. That's my feeling. You can see it, you know, you can see it from the highway, and you can see it from the exit ramp, but.
No, no, I, I um, regularly come home, I work in Essex, and I come home River Road, and I can see it every night when it's lit up and I'm coming home, and I'm not on the exit ramp, I'm just, you know, on the, you know, Main Street Road, so, thanks, thanks.
Okay, yep, thanks, Aaron.
Um, if I could add to that as part of the public comment conversation, um, we do realize that everything associated with the viewscape of everything south of Route Two is not in the Gateway District and is still free to be fully developed to the limits that any AR property can be developed to.
So you're saying that it's across the floodplain side of Route Two? Is that what you're saying?
The whole viewscape of, of the gateway, and I was confused in the last meeting, I do have to forgive, ask for forgiveness because I have missed some meetings or, too many meetings around the holidays. Uh, but I'm not sure where this is originating from, but none of that is, is, is a factor with, with the gateway um, zoning district. There's nothing that they can do in the gateway that's going to protect or impair the viewscape along Route Two.
Right, that was kind of the conclusion that we came to when we were discussing this issue at one of our last meetings, so.
Okay, yeah.
I think we're on the same page there.
Looking forward to maybe uh, number six now.
Okay. So any other comments about that? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to item number four, review of the minutes of the two one twenty-three meeting. Would anyone like to make any corrections, additions, deletions? Clarifications to those minutes? Any hands up? Are there people beyond this group?
This is our whole group, so now we got there, we got, I can explain this to you.
Okay.
It's all depends on how much we wanna see the screen versus.
I just need to see the people. All right, so it looks like no one would like to address the minutes, so we will accept them into the record as written. Okay, great. And we've already taken care of number five. So we'll move on to number six, which is just opening the floor up for a discussion of what we want to do next. What we would like to have as priorities. I have a list myself, but I will open it for other people to weigh in first.
Pickler's own or just anything that hasn't always been?
Anything that we've finished these two districts, you know, we have, we have minor issues, we have more major issues, we have the whole other set of districts. Mark?
Yes, sorry about that, damn you. Um, first of all, yay. Um, second of all, yeah, there's a got a pretty healthy list too, but I probably at the top of those lists is um, something to do with the uh, Airbnb zoning on a townwide level.
Okay, short-term rentals?
Yes, proper term, thank you, um, because it certainly isn't just one organization that's, that's uh, the root of this. Um, and then also, I would, I would add frankly, the viewscape, the Route Two Interstate Exchange of Viewscape. Um, actually, some kind. And then, and then, of course, getting into, you know, properly attacking the village South Neighborhood District around the Round Church. But I would put those at the, the top of the, of the list. My humble opinion. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I just put in the chat, I support Mark's suggestion of looking at short-term rentals.
Okay. Anything else, Chris, that you have on your list?
Did we approve, uh, we approved with the map, so we're done with the, the village commercial residential.
Correct? Yes, we are. We're done with the village commercial resident.
I would, I would propose to put the neighborhoods, the village neighborhoods um, on my list um, after the short-term rentals. I think, you know, we did, we had those fairly buttoned up previously, and I don't think it would be a heavy lift to
Yeah.
bite those off.
I agree. I looked at the last versions that I have of those, and I I um, put that we had done eighty percent of them, of the work. I don't know exactly where I got that number, but that was my assessment of where we were with the neighborhoods, is that we had done a fair amount of work on it. Um, and we were waiting at that time for the housing consultant report to be finalized, and we were going to compare the neighborhoods and see if there was anything based on the housing consultant report that we wanted to change, so. But a good amount of work done on that, and outrageous.
I think that, that's, that is where we left it, and that is why we've delayed as long as we have finishing up um, the neighborhood, so I, I would propose we, we put that on an agenda, that side-to-side comparison that you just mentioned.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Dan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, and then uh, Chris stole my thunder. I, I agree on, on both, on both front Mark's suggestion and Chris's, so I think both would be the most direct way to effectuate um, the housing need. So, yeah, I, I agree with what has already been said.
Yeah, we've got the village neighborhood in the north and the village neighborhood to the south, and you know, there's a question of should they be separate? Do we want to think about combining them? But anyway, we can take up the two, what we had previously laid out as two separate districts with slightly different um, parameters.
Well, if I can piggyback off of Dan's last statement and start, sorry to steal your thunder, Dan. But uh, I, you know, we should really, I think, be looking at anything that provides opportunities for housing to be built uh, in our town, so if there are other zoning issues or other issues, um, like short-term rentals that increase the amount of housing stock for people um, who would be interested in looking at those items.
Okay. Lisa?
Virginia, there's, there's a couple of things that um, are tough to deal with in any one zoning district, but I think they kind of permeate a lot of the future uh, considerations we're going to, to make. And one of them is concerning affordable housing. I've heard from people, well, how much is enough? And how should it be distributed? Assuming we can even find a way to promote affordable housing, which is, it, it's a great sounding mandate that's pretty difficult, I mean, for developers, if they can get more money for development.
Yes.
At a higher price, why would they build affordable? You know, it's, there's, and I know that's everybody's problem that's trying to do affordable housing, not just ours, but even if we create a certain amount of area where affordable housing is possible, how much of that should we expect to actually be developed that way? Not all of it, probably. Um, or should all of it be considered to be going to happen? And if so, we'll have to be careful how it's distributed, so it doesn't fall all in place. I think the village people are concerned that every available parcel right now in the village would in the future be, be expected to be filled with affordable housing, it's probably too much for the village to bear, I don't know. But what about nearby areas? What about, you know, the South Village? I, I'd like to see us come up with some kind of distribution, whether it's right or wrong, but at least something to throw dogs at in the future, as we plan for that.
Um, that is also an ongoing discussion with the housing committee, and it might be good to come from them. Um, I can in a minute tell you what the housing committee is thinking about their next step.
There's one other thing?
Yep.
Um, I, I know Robbie had talked about an official map at some point, and that would help a lot, I think, as we start building out portions of zoning districts. Any access that we discover five or ten years now that we really should have had isn't going to be available, unless we have an official map and we show those kinds of amenities on it. We can change the official map if it becomes we do, pretty do that, but if we don't have an official map, that'll, no, you'll pass and be gone.
Okay, official map.
I know it's not something we just go, yeah, here's our official map, it's it's a
You gotta look into it, and
It's a big planning process, so, you know, maybe we start with one, I don't know, maybe we start with a piece, maybe it's consists of, it's a mosaic, I don't know.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to learn something about creating how other towns have created their official map.
Right.
And the official map, of course, is different from the official zoning map.
Exactly.
This is not a zoning map, this is a plan of the infrastructure and where it will be laid out in the future.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well, I can tell you what's on my list, and I also had short-term rentals near the top, that seems to be a popular a popular topic and one that does cross over into the housing realm, so the housing committee is also looking at short-term rentals, controlling them as a way to increase housing, so there's that. Um, a second one that I had was, and these are a few that might be kind of short. Um, as opposed to, for instance, the neighborhood districts, which I think will be a good ongoing long-term project that we, that I agree that we should work on soon. The I wanted us to just briefly look at the site plan standards, so in this package of materials we're sending to the select board, we have added a few things that the site plan can be reviewed by the zoning administrator, it does not have to have a DRB review. I want us to look at the site plan standards and make sure that we feel that those are adequate for the zoning administrator. As you know, one of Revy and my long-term interests was in rearranging the zoning such that the application requirements were not all mixed up with the actual standards. Right now, what the zoning administrator has is he has a list of what you have to include in your application, but he doesn't, it doesn't really exactly say what qualifies something as being approval-worthy. Obviously, it has to be compatible with all of the zoning requirements that are listed, but not necessarily the section that says site plan review, which is assigned to the DRB, so it may be fine, I just want us to look at it at some point. A second one was looking at the signs section. Is this adequate? Is it adequate for Willis Farm? The directory signs right now are only allowed to be in two places, Railroad Street and Jolena Court, they're not even allowed to be at the Round Church Complex, I don't know why they can have a directory sign, I think maybe it was grandfathered, but to look at the sign section, it's short, and just make sure it's what we need. But to look at the sign section, it's short and just make sure it's what we need. Um. Jolena Court. Would we like to look at that and see if there are more housing opportunities there? You know, we, was a few years ago that we put that district in place. At that time, we were working with the popular sentiment that it was, there was to be commercial space there. So we reserved the ground floor of all their buildings to be commercial space. Is that really what we want? Do we think that in the buildings behind the current Buttermilk Building? That commercial space is going to be used as commercial space? Would we like maybe to let them have more housing and. Remove that requirement for commercial space or reduce the requirement for commercial space? So while we're thinking about housing opportunities like Chris mentioned. Um, that's another one that the housing committee is also thinking about and putting on their list. What would need to happen for that? Some of that to become more housing. Um, and how, how much housing do we want? Revy was a proponent of ninety unit in that space. That seems like an exorbitant amount. But right now they have forty-five as a limit. Could they go to sixty, for instance? So, Chris?
Um, thank you, Virginia. Uh, yes, I, I, I think Jolena Court should be revisited, but I. Um, for planning commissioners who have been on the commission for a while. Um, that particular project, the first project and. The cap on. Residential versus commercial, um, that was all done in interim zoning by the select board. And even though the select board has changed over, um, I still think it. Probably would be a good idea to, to work closely with them as to how they feel about the changes we're making as we're making and move forward. They, they have seemed to take a strong interest in that particular zoning district previously.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, definitely, I think working closely with them is, is a good idea and, you know. The housing, working with the housing committee also that is putting together this list of what would need to be done. Would there need, you know, in this case, there would need to be zoning changes. Select board interest. I mean, all of those things, I think you're right, would need to go into that discussion.
I, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, to, to have the conversation. For sure. A lot's changed since then.
Yes. Um, another thing on my list is the Far Farm. So. I have had a couple of conversations with Erin Far. Um. The Far Family Farm is owned by the younger generation now, so they would need to be involved. She has said that they would be worth having a discussion, it would be worth. Our while to have a discussion about planning with them. They are definitely very interested in continuing to farm. They want to keep it as a farm. But what would work with that? You know, how, what, what are they thinking about the long term? So. Revy had suggested that we get a grant to do a master planning. Process with them, but I don't think myself that they're really ready to involve the public. In discussing what should happen to their farm. They are, they have said that they're willing to talk to the planning commission. And to try to see, you know, why, the reason that it's important, obviously, is because it's the only large. Adjacent parcel to water and sewer that we have adjacent to the village. You know, it's kind of crucial what happens to that if it's not in farming. Um, so anyway, that's on my list. We would have to figure out what it is exactly that we want to talk to them about and how we want to go about it and who we want to approach and. Um, but that's, so that's a planning process that we could undergo.
Virginia, that, that almost sounds like they should. Be first and say what they're thinking and then we.
Well, what they're thinking is they want it to be a farm.
Okay.
And they want to try different things to make it work as a farm, not necessarily a dairy farm, but they're trying different farming strategies and. It is pretty cool having that little farm there right next to the village. But what about the edges of it? I mean, is there some way that? Or would they like to look further into the future or?
So they're not talking about subdividing or?
No.
Different uses.
No.
Okay.
They want to make it work as a farm, but they're happy to talk to the planning commission if we want to talk to them. So it would be a proactive thing and obviously we would not go into it saying we think you should do this or that or. Yeah, we, we just would like to help them do whatever they want to do and make sure that the long-term strategy. Is coherent.
Yeah.
So.
So where we left off on this one, Virginia, the far as we had talked about that up slope portion. That is east of the barn. As zoning it. Uh, eligible for residential housing. And at the time. Uh, Chuck was still the owner, but it was in the process of transferring it over, I guess, and. He indicated that they were still interested in farming and, but, you know. Flexibility is okay. So I, I mean, are you thinking of something beyond that discussion that we had?
Um, well, that's a question. Is there something beyond that discussion that we should be having? Is there a discussion beyond that that we should be having?
Well, from my view, no, because I don't, they want to be farmers and they want to continue farming. And if we zone their entire farm, the developable portion is eligible for being residential. We may lose a farm right on the edge of our village. And so I, um, I, and, and they're not in favor of it. So I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why we would be pushing it because if the fires ever decide that they don't want to farm anymore. And that they want to come to the planning commission and say, we'd like to, we'd like to change the zoning of our farm from agricultural to residential. The town would do it in a minute. So I'm not sure why this is something the planning commission should be pursuing, I guess.
Well, because it's not all or nothing. I mean, we don't have to rezone the whole upper portion or.
Well, that's why I started, that's why I started the question. Is it just the up slope portion? And then your answer was, no, it could be more than that than.
Well, it could be the edges, you know, and also they are concerned that they can't. Make money, you know, they would like to have opportunities. To help them be able to keep it as a farm. So. You know, are there edges to that property that could be? Like the way Richmond Terrace is up there on the back edge, so to speak, their property. You know, are there other things like that or, or what opportunities? Maybe we should be giving them some other. Kind of, uh, commercial opportunities that can help them make a go of it as a farm.
I don't think agriculture's.
Discussion. That would be the discussion that.
I, I don't think agriculture is prohibited from any on-farm econ- economic activities. I do think it's important to have the fires in the conversation with whatever we're going to talk about, though. I do agree with that.
Hmm, hmm, hmm. Yeah, well, we have talked before about having, um, in our town plan. We talked about having more opportunities to help retain farming as a viable enterprise. So it would require us looking at it, you know, let's look at what is allowed and is that satisfactory to? You know, anyway, Allison, you had your hand up.
Yes, uh, thank you, Virginia. It seems, uh, uh, you know, as we drive by there, I think a lot of us look at that and say, wouldn't that be a great house lot or something like that? But if you think of the irony of the, uh, number of farms in Vermont that have been converted into other things. Because the farmers are going out of business. And here we have right in our town, somebody that wants to keep farming. I don't think we should do anything to discourage that. I'm, I'm sorry, but I, that's what I think. I think if they want to talk to us about maybe developing a certain area, that's fine, but we should not in any way pressure them. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, I agree that we shouldn't pressure them. If we have opportunities that we can help them stay in farming, that's also.
Well, that's right. That's a little bit different. If they're, if they're on the edge and they need that kind of help. Uh, but from what I've heard so far, I have not heard that. Uh, I think this is a, a topic that we have to be very careful with and I, uh, support Chris's concern about it too.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Chris, you had something else or not? Allison took your.
No, I was playing around with my big thumbs up emoji for Allison.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I'm, you know, I'm another person that has a big firm too and, and I, I want to keep it open as long as I. Possibly can. And, uh, when you look at the taxes and the this and the that, it's, it's a challenge and, and. Uh, there are things that are more important than money to me, but I don't know how long I can keep that attitude, but I'll try.
Well.
Yeah, well.
Keeping working land is important.
Yes, it, it is. It, it is. And, and yes, um.
And, and, and that doesn't, you know, I don't think that means that Allison and I are, are opposed to, to, to doing some things. As you mentioned on the edges, but I'm more comfortable in this process. If the fires come forward with the proposal of how they would like their zoning change rather than us trying to guess what it would. Do to, to make them. They probably have some ideas on how they want to use their land. And if they don't, well, when they, when they have some. And they need a change of zoning, you know, we're right here.
I, thank you, Chris.
They probably know which is the most productive land and what isn't. And if they had to, if they had a plan A, they would disfarm it all, nothing would change. If they need a plan B for economics. Maybe some of that marginal farmland is available on the market. Maybe they put an acre or two on the market. And we can help them place that where it should be, maybe the most contiguous to a zoning district that we already have. Uh, set for development. Or maybe it's near a road that is probably going to be built, you know, those sort of things. So you're right, yeah, they should take the lead on that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the marginal land is, is, you know, adjacent. And right next to the, to the waterline. So it's in the sewer line. So it's. Um, that is their marginal land, but you know, the last time we spoke with them, which was, you know, over two years ago and before the kids took over. Um, they didn't want to do anything because the kids were set on farming and. Um, but if that's changed, you know, Virginia, when you have your next conversation with Erin, definitely invite them to come forward and, and bring their proposal. We'd be happy to look at it because, you know, I, I want to keep that farm firming. And if they, and if they do need to sell off some of their land for residenials, that's a plus for them and a plus for the town, but I don't really. Want to wade into a process that's ill-defined.
Yeah, I mean, they've always wanted flexibility is what I had always heard from Chuck is that they just want flexibility. Because they don't know how anything is going.
They know the future more than we know.
Anyway.
There's something.
Um, and this is definitely not limited to Richmond, this problem. If you've been reading the Williston Observer. This is a huge problem. The, the land, you know. The conflict between housing and open land is a huge issue in our neighborhood. Along with lots of other towns who have open land next to the infrastructure. What to do? What to do? Not enough housing. Anyway, so we might put that lower on the list of things that me, we might want to do. Mm-hmm. Um, Allison.
Well, I, uh, speaking of the need for housing, um, uh. I'm wondering if perhaps with some of our outlying properties where there's lots of land and maybe a large house. Um, and I'm not particularly thinking of this in terms of my own house and I have one of those big old houses. But, um, should we consider the possibility of allowing people in the outlying districts to have? Um, more auxiliary housing on their property or making a triplex out of a big house instead of a duplex or something like that? Is that, is that something that might be a viable consideration for additional affordable housing for people?
I think definitely. And I, I mean, I think we promised the people in the village. That we were going to look at these strategies for the outlying area as well, so that they would not feel like we were targeting them for all the increased density. But two residential properties on a lot, you know, that's a somewhat radical thing. We've done with the zoning with the RC districts. How about that out there in the AR district?
Right.
Three and four unit buildings? How about that? Making that a permitted uses? I mean, I think all of these things that we've kind of pioneered in these, in the RC district where we didn't have a lot of resistance to them. That are designed to increase housing, I think we should be looking at them now. In the AR district. We have to protect the farmland and the forest land as well. This is the dilemma that we're going to have. But can we have infill in already existing developed areas in the outline properties? That means the AR district principally that you're talking about. So that's definitely got to be on the list, you know? What are we going to do with the AR district? That is going to be a major, big discussion. Right, you know?
That's, that uses existing infrastructure as small as it might be, septic systems, driveways, you know, the clearings. Uh, in the same way that we're trying to use, um, you know, intel in the village. Uh, because it's already got services. So that the outlining areas have a lot less services, but whether you have something, access at least or flat land or.
Yeah.
Existing.
Also true. Yeah.
Yeah, and right now it's easier to build on virgin land and because you can build expensive houses. And if you're a builder, you can actually make your money back. So how are we going to balance that? And are we going to cluster them? Are we going to have mandatory clustering? Are we, you know, what, all of those issues we're going to have to talk about. When we talk about the AR, it's going to be like the Far Farm writ large. So. Um, Gina, you had a comment?
Hi, yeah, I have a question. Um, so I'm in exactly the situation you were talking about where in the AR district. And we have a huge structure that could have been, uh, three, that one thousand square foot dwellings. But, um, because, because the, that we don't have enough acreage, we could only have one ADU that we built in there. And so this is what we were looking at. We know how much, um, my daughter and her family are in there now renting that now, but. We know how many people there are looking for it. Like so many people came to us, oh, tell us if you build the other two. But we couldn't because, um, number one, we're not on town water. So, uh, and we don't have enough acreage. To support the other two dwellings, but here it is. And I'm sure I'm not, we're not in the only situation. We have this. Perfect structure that is in an incredible location and we're right next to the VYCCs, which is all commercial. Um, in the front. So there's a lot of traffic. So it's right in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, and it, to me, it would just be ideal. And I know it's only three families, but. I know how appreciative my daughter, like, and my son-in-law, um. He's an intensive care nurse here at the hospital, just for them to be able to stay here in town. Um, and selfishly with my grandchildren, um, that's great, but it could have helped two more. So when you're looking at zones and I, and I see how many, now just had come up with a funding to build two more units is. Gonna be really hard, but there are so many grants out there right now, but I feel like by the time we get to the AR zone. And, um, figure this out, those grants will have come and gone, but I mean, I know there's so much grant money for people. Who want to build ADUs to solve, you know, I was reading, Virginia, you mentioned some articles in, uh, seven days. So I was reading through those and looking at what Waitsfield has done and, um. Uh, Woodstock, like some different places that have come up with some really creative solutions that. This seems to be the ideal situation and they, they're handling it that in a, in a way where. You, it's only two families, but like Christopher said, um, if we, instead of having like one big cluster, if we could have. Different people, it helps everybody. It helps the people who are building, um, the units and then it helps the, so many. Different people, it helps everybody. It helps the people who are building, um, the units, and then it helps the so many families. And they can be affording housing in all different locations. My, but my question was the water, will that ever be? And um, I know in uh, Essex, they have. They have properties where six units are on, um, you know, the well, well water. So I don't know how, I don't know enough about the water and if that'll ever be something that would be solved here.
Yeah, well, you can um, have shared wells, shared water systems and shared septic. You know, community septic fields too, so. Um, it doesn't necessarily require town infrastructure. You can have community infrastructure or shared infrastructure. So anyway, it's just easier and more efficient and cheaper to have it on town infrastructure.
Yeah, but I, I, as far as the um, water goes, if you have. I believe in um, agricultural, if you have an acre. Um, it, it doesn't, I, I don't remember exactly what the wording was, but. You have to have more acreage if you're on well water as opposed to town. Does that make sense?
In some districts, the zoning was written such that you need a bigger amount of land if you do not have municipal water and sewer. So we need to look at that. That's something that we need to look at that. And as a matter of fact, in the gateway, we changed that. Um, because that was how it was written in the gateway. You could have three units per acre if you had municipal water and sewer. Was going to be coming out there. And one acre you needed, you could have one unit per acre if you didn't. And we changed it. Just requiring that you have wastewater and water. So however you wanna get it. You know, you have to have an A and R permit for your wastewater, but if you can get it with a community system or. Whatever you wanna do to acquire it, that is gonna work for you. Um, could you tell us your last name? By the way, the TV people who are recording it need to have it for their minutes.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Prader, P R A D E R.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyway, yeah, so we're gonna be. We're gonna be looking at all these things and um, so anyway, you're out near the V Y C C? Yeah, so before you get to the V Y C C coming from Richmond?
Um, before, right before, and we've got a huge, um, garage there that's a perfect structure.
Okay, is that Craig, the Craig Cowles property?
Yes, yes, he knows you very well.
Okay, yes, I know his equipment is there. Okay, so that's the AR district. It's on our list to do something with. What about? To get back to the idea of housing. Do we still have a quorum?
I think you do have five though, let's see. I need five, right?
We have. Okay, Mark is still here.
Allison, our three out, and then you two here.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, yep. Okay, we still have a quorum. We've had a couple of people who have left for the moment, but. Another thing on the housing committee's list of things to investigate that might be able to provide affording and possibly. Housing or affordable housing is the Brown's Court Ball Field. Which is a four acre parcel owned by the town up at the end of Brown's Court. Um, and it's possible, you know, I mean, it's another piece of open land. But it is on water and sewer. There's the middle school girl softball team that practices there. It's a great dog walking place, very nice. Uh, but it's four acres. What if the town were to consider? Giving it to Champlain Trust Housing or. Cathedral Square, you know, they would not have to pay for the land. Is that a place where affordable housing could be put? So that is something that we could talk about or think about if we wanted to do that. Obviously, many other people would be involved in that discussion. Including the select board and the. Water and Sewer District zoning would be involved right now. Um, that area, you know, we would have to join that to the RC to get even eight units per acre. We might be able to get the thirty eight, the thirty units that the um, housing agencies kind of need to make it financially viable. But, so there would be some zoning components to that. Mark.
Yeah, wow, that's a, that's a wild thought. And, and kinda scary from my perspective, just because I don't think Richmond has enough. Public space as it is, but.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, we don't have that much.
Do that and maybe exchange it for. More public space in, in other areas that might not be. As developable. I, I, you know, that could be a reasonable option, but having a, having that park up there by the school. Has a lot of potential and, and uh, as a member of the rec committee, we've talked a lot about that park and how. It could be improved and become a. An even stronger resource for the community, so. So yeah, my first take on that is wow.
Yeah, well, actually, I thought about this, Mark, at that meeting of the rec committee that both Lisa and I went to and you. Which I thought was well attended by planning commissioners. There were three of us there, but you're also a member, anyway. Was that they had suggested maybe putting a pickleball court, which is beloved by your senior citizens, so. How about, you know, supported senior housing and uh, add a pickleball court? So anyway, it seems like there are some. Possibilities there if we're talking about how to increase housing. So anyway, something to think about. A couple of other things on my list. Finish up the arrows, the air airspace. You know, Burlington Airport wants us to do this airspace thing, and I. Talked to the people in Williston about how they fixed it. They have a very simple sentence in their zoning. That I think we could get rid of that issue that's been hanging around. Chris Cole is not here at the moment, but. Yeah, the height of structures. They have this one sentence that's so simple. Anyway, that's on the list. We ought to get rid of them so they don't keep talking to us about it. Is that enough? I've got other things on my list. That's probably enough for right now. There's a few things that the zoning administrator Tyler Masha. Wanted us to look at. They're sort of small things like. Clarifying section five point three point three about misrepresentation. That wouldn't take too long. The traffic study language, he wants us to look at for a particular reason. That shouldn't take too long. The P U D language, is that what we want? The P U D, P R D language, is that? What we need? Uh, so he, it was interested in looking at that. Cannabis, should we have a discussion about, do we want regulations about cannabis? We don't have retail cannabis right now, but. Growing it, making it, processing it. If it comes in under light manufacturing, if somebody wants a processing facility that they apply for light manufacturing. There is an accessory retail use for light manufacturing. Would, what would the status of that be? Would they be able to do retail or no retail? Anyway. That will be coming eventually. Eventually, we assume it will be approved that we'll have retail cannabis in Richmond. So do we wanna be ahead of that game? The select board would like us to have regulations. Before they put it on the ballot again. Not urgent, but you know, something. So that's what I've got. How would we like to, what would we like to do for our next meeting? Whi- which one of these do we wanna go to? Do we wanna? Try to do more than one at the same time? Do we wanna run these neighborhoods? Um, get out the old neighborhoods material. We're also almost done with the village commercial districts. That was about eighty percent done. Also, we could look at those, the remaining village districts. And for light relief, we could talk about short-term rental rentals or something. Oh, Dan is raising his hand. Okay, Dan. Yes, thank you.
I, I think going after the neighborhoods and short-term rentals. Would be a good way to kind of keep the ball rolling on. Uh, kind of the meat and potatoes of what we do, because a lot of the other things are very. Very specific that we could kind of put the word out that, you know, we're, we're visiting them and. As we go through the neighborhoods, naturally, those projects will, you know, kind of come up and have discussion. And so I just think from a, a timing perspective, the neighborhoods as well as short-term rentals. Would be a good thing to tackle next while we put, we put other people on notice that, you know, hey, we, we wanna hear what. The fires have to have, have in mind or, you know, other, like, I think Sid. Um, had some thoughts on that, his property back on Baker. So that's, that's my thought.
Okay, yeah, so Sid Miller is interested in us passing or the select board approving. The residential RC Village Residential Commercial Neighborhood, because he would like to put multifamily housing. Or he would like to have the ability to put housing on his property.
Oh, great.
So he's gonna be good to go when the select board approves this package. All right, well, that's fine. I mean, I think that's a good um, start. We can um, pull up what we had last on the residential neighborhoods. I could send that out. What I have in my files is being the last time we talked about that. Short-term rentals policy, what should our, what, what do we need to know? What kind of information? Do we need and where should we get it to think about that? Any suggestions?
What do like VRVO and Airbnb require of their users? Their users being both renters and providers? Of property. There must be some pretty specific agreement. I'm not aware, I've never done it, but must be a pretty specific agreement. For controlling what goes on, or is it maybe there isn't?
Yeah.
Um, if there is, then there is a fill the gap. If there is one, is it an enforcement problem or is it just simply? Transportation issue between the renters and providers? You know, I don't know. I, I know when people. Agreed to doing uh, an Airbnb, for example, or the LBO, uh, it's pretty stringent. You've got to do this, you've got to do this. You've got to keep the place clean, you know, when you clean it, I mean, uh, if it's not satisfactory in July, you may call. I mean, there's, there's. Bitch marks all the way through the process. So what is it that's not working?
Well, the, the bigger issue is that investors buy properties. And rent them as short-term rentals, which removes a lot of rental housing from the market. So in communities where it's a big problem, in Richmond, it's not yet a big problem, but where it's a big problem. That's the problem. There's nowhere for renters to rent, because it's all short-term rental, because it's more profitable. Mark, you had your hand up.
Dang it, sorry, muted. Uh, I didn't mean to cut you guys off with that hand raised, but um, you asked about. You know, kind of where we start the conversation, and I think it would behoove us to. Select some information from the state, find out what they're doing and, and what they're allowing in our. Abilities to, to regulate those. I mean, can, can we regulate them like uh? Any other uh, short-term rental hotel? Does, does the state have say over that? Does the town have any jurisdiction when it comes to? Hotel regulation? And can we expand that to? You know, short-term rental. Scenarios. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of regulations that are required for. Hotels. That, that, the short-term rental owners. Aren't obligated to follow up with and, and, and adhere to. So that, I think that's where I'd start is, is what's, where's the state's position on this? And where, where are we allowed to go beyond what the state's position is?
Yeah, I mean, Revy and I worked a little bit on this at one point in time, going in the direction of requiring that. People lived in the houses that had short-term rentals. In other words, you have to be a resident in the building so that it still allows people to make some money. You know, they do get to avoid hotel restrictions, which is. The hotels don't like, because they have to spend the money doing these restrictions, but. One of the big ways to avoid having investors buy up a lot of properties and use them as short-term rentals. Is requiring that you have to live in the place where you do short-term rentals and places, you know, there are towns that have put that. In place. So there are a lot of towns that have put a lot of different kinds of restrictions in place, so.
That would help on both counts.
Yeah, I would like to look at some of those.
Not having a slot of these things.
Yeah, one of the things that's often suggested as a place to start is to have a registry of short-term rentals. And that's, seems like a good idea. It just has to be managed, you know, and the question is, do we have? The capability to maintain a registry of short-term rentals? So anyway, we can look at our neighbors' towns and see what they're thinking and what. Restrictions have been put in place, but people have been struggling with it, um, because many people. Want to do short-term rentals to help pay for their mortgage or whatever. Um, so. Uh, Gina, I think you had a hand up.
Yeah, so don't quote me on this, but I think that if it's under three rooms. That you, you don't need to jump through any hoops if it's three or more. Um, because we had looked into making this an inn, we prefer lo- you know, long-term renters there, but. Uh, if it came down to it, um, we were considering doing short-term rentals down there. And I think if it's under three rooms, um, which is uh, why actually when. I think you changed the definition for the inn. And, or, or it's in the process being changed, if I'm right? And it had been, it had said, um, an inn by, you know, Richmond's um, definition was more than a certain number of rooms. And then that kind of conflicted with, um, the state which said less than. But where you changed it now, I know it sounds confusing. You, if it's changed to less than a certain number of rooms. Then you could potentially have, according to the state, two or fewer. If by Richmond, it would be an inn. And by the state, it would be basically nothing, because you don't have three or more, so. Um, and I don't quote me on that because this, I looked this up a little while back when we were thinking about that, but. Do you know what I'm saying? I.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that we're bound by the state.
Okay.
Definition, you know, we can define it the way we want and allow it where we want. So i- in that particular instance, I'm not.
Yeah, but it was, it was matching up. Um, I'm sorry, but it was, it was kind of matching up, so having. If, for the town saying less than. I don't know, it was ten rooms, I think. Having less than a certain number of rooms. Um, allowed for. You to have two rooms. Do you know what I'm saying? Um, and like the state said you had to have less than, if you had more than, if you had three or more, you have to jump through all these hoops. Um, and like the state said, you had to have less than, if you had more than, if you had three or more, you have to jump through all these hoops. Um, and Richmond said, i- if you, like, the definitions were opposite, but have, now the way they're written, they actually allow, I think, for more people to have short-term rentals, just one or two.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we'd have to look into all of that when we have this discussion about short-term rentals is what lines we want to draw, because I think there's a lot of leeway in the lines that you draw. It just depends what people want, you know, I mean, we're gonna have to outreach too, to find out what people in Richmond want in the way of short-term rentals. And weigh that with the planning problems of having a lot of short-term rentals, which is reducing the amount of long-term rentals, so. Um, anyway, but we would look into that and what, you know, if there are statutory requirements or uh how our definitions stand up um to what we want to put in place, so. Um, yeah, so those are, anyway, those are some places to start. Um, anything else? Well, we'd need to, since we've done these residential commercial neighborhoods, we finalized them since looking at the neighborhoods. So I think we need to compare them, you know, the residential commercial, what we've said and what additions we have made, like putting multiple uh putting two residential primary structures on a lot, that kind of thing. We may be able to backfill and enter into our residential neighborhoods. Um, but then, you know, we will need to probably get some more public outreach if we make those kinds of changes.
Yeah, one of the common things, Jenny, I think that you've been heading towards, when any residential gift, whatever, whatever design just did, residential uses is consuming less land in the project. That's generally a good goal.
Right next to the village, I don't think we should, anything whatsoever to interfere with that. Yeah. Are you talking to us, Allison?
I'm thinking out loud.
Okay.
I'm afraid-
Loud enough, I couldn't hear what you said.
But, well, I was just thinking, that's all. I, I guess, you know, when you live alone, you learn to talk to yourself and nobody else cares what you say anyway, so. Uh, no, just thinking. But thank you for asking, Virginia. Sorry for the confusion.
Anyway, yeah. All right, so if nobody has anything else that they want to talk about, we'll kind of start with those two things that were mentioned several times, the short-term rentals, looking into that. People can, you know, look for ideas out there in the world, and then the village residential neighborhoods, and I'll send you the last copies that I had. And you can start looking at that and thinking about what we want to do there.
Lisa. You know, the more things that I read about recreation, the more Richmond's name comes up, and it's also in the town plan, you know, we want to be a recreational, a recreation name, kind of. We've got all these features, and we certainly have the uh opportunity to do that. But there's also stuff that comes along with it, that's not so good. Crowding, um-
Parking.
Parking, yeah. Yeah, exactly. I mean, the river gets full, so you walk across it and rap. Um. I wonder, yeah, I'm looking through, like, I should buy a, a lot of travel guide magazines, but I forget who picked it up. Um, Richmond is one of the destinations in the, oh, you can get this there, you can get that there. We're getting a lot of people, I drive along the road regularly enough that I go like this to avoid bikers and I don't know how the joggers and bikers mix, I haven't seen that happen yet, but it's, it's time for another layer, maybe another level of awareness and training in that aspect too. Uh, maybe that's not very, but there's, it's kind of get out of him now, I think it's certainly out of him a little bit, where we don't really have any formal guidelines or more, or how much parking should be allotted to that, or Bedway Road, as you know, is a prime example. It's a victim of its own beauty. Uh, it's, it's a shame, but it's probably not going to go away.
Yeah, whether there are solutions out there or not, I don't know, but-
It's been improved to, you know, by the area and so, but that area is probably going to become more popular, I hope it is, but um, yeah. Anyway, you know, parking-
Excuse me, this is Erin. Could I ask, um, Lisa, could you move your laptop? Because I think the mic is kind of blocking you, the laptop. Thank you.
How's that?
Thank you, that's, that's better, thank you.
Okay.
Well, one thing that's tangentially related to that comment is the fact that a year and a half ago or so, Revvy and I formed this committee of coordinating other committees. We felt that the planning commission should be involved in helping committees to work together, because we have this recreational parking committee over here. What are they doing? Well, we don't know. Then we have this recreation committee over here. What are they doing? You know, we don't know. We have this housing committee over there. What are they doing? So we tried it and it was difficult and it, we sort of let it drop. There were some issues with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but maybe people would like to try to reconstitute that, so that there were times when all these committees got together and tried to brainstorm their way out of some of these growing pains that we're going to have, so.
That would be a good idea. So it's your fault then, okay?
It is my fault. I dropped the ball. I got-
Tune into uh the parking advisory committee and also the rec committee and I-
Right.
And as I can, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I've, I've got perfect attendance, but both of them got their hands full of good things, but they also have some issues that have come up that they themselves-
Right.
It's beyond them to solve it, so.
Yeah. Well, one of the problems that we had with that coordinating committee was that it was unclear why the planning commission members were there, like, were they spies or?
Right, should they keep their mouths closed?
Should they keep their mouths closed? Should they try to be involved? What is their role exactly? I mean,
Mm-hmm.
You know, and Revvy had his hand, fingers in so many pies that he didn't, wasn't able to help.
Right.
Focus that committee and keep it moving, and now he's not here, and I don't know if anybody else cares that we coordinate, but it seems like it's theoretically a good idea.
It did do some good. I mean, I, I think anybody that's done that has learned a lot. I mean, I've learned a lot of of stuff now at the other end of the town that I didn't really know about. I wouldn't have known about, and-
But has it been helpful? Has it been enabled us to work together better?
Yeah, I guess usually to, to arrive at helpful, you have to go through problematic first.
Yeah.
So there, there are problems. Those committees have solved some things, but again, their, their scope is-
Right.
They have to limit their scope.
Right. We all have more than we can deal with. Well, anyway, if you have any more thoughts about getting it together or how it would work or anything like that.
Going to those committees as an attendee, because now I, I, I know the people well enough that when I-
Right.
Police chief was at the parking advisory committee um last meeting on Monday.
Clearly has to be involved.
Yeah, what the constable can do, what they can do about traffic, what they can do about parking, what they use.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's, somebody paid for that.
Well, at one point, we were going to have people make reports back to the planning commission, but we got busy and we never really had time to do that either, so anyway. Coordinating committee, yes, Gina.
I think you have some, my support. I think that's a great idea, because I know you know that you've seen my face randomly popping up at every meeting, because uh what I'm finding, the, the things I would, I was interested in or wanted to assist with, you needed to know what someone else was doing. I mean, each um committee doesn't function in isolation from each other, so I'm surprised there isn't any kind of, I mean, other than you know, popping into other meetings to see what they're doing like this, which I think is important to do.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just a matter of having the person power to do it and you know, all of these committees, like Lisa said, have their hands totally full, and we sort of have our hands full, and where do you fit that in? But you know, if we can figure out how to make it work, I think it would be useful to be able to at least once or twice a year, maybe gather these committees together, or, you know. We do have, which we haven't done this year, but we did last year, we sent out a questionnaire to all of the committees asking them of their town plan goals that they were assigned by our twenty eighteen town plan. What have you done? Which ones of these goals have you been working on? And it was great to look at them, because a lot of the goals, people had really been working on them, and they had, you know, come to conclusions about the goals. So I think that's a good reminder that this year, this January, or well, we're now February, whatever, um, we send that out again and have it updated every year. We started a file on how people are doing with their goals. What have you done with your goals? So-
That makes a suggestion, you know, when I, I'm just thinking of what I can do. Um, I can talk a lot. But if somebody would write it down, then I'll hear it next week the same way I said it today, but if I have to write it down, it's probably not going to happen. So if there were a scribe, just someone who would get the stuff down, I mean, literally just put it on paper for these groups, I think would create a lot of um progress in then having a list of things.
Well, there's, if they're town committees, they have to have minutes.
Yeah, and I know we've probably got video of all of them, but-
And we've got video of all of them.
But it's, we're gonna wade through it.
Yeah, well-
No, that's-
Duncan does not have enough hours in a month, a week's worth of-
But it's a good point of like, it's almost for me, it's the format of it. There's got to be a certain parameter of, yes, it's not the minutes, it's other things. Something that should be a common thing going back to the town plan that each committee could report on quarterly, maybe. But that's just my two cents on that.
Well, we, we would settle for yearly. But it was, you know, it was a really good exercise last year when we did it, and I had sort of forgotten about it since Revvy left and-
But, yeah, it's, but information is, it's a fire hose, you know, so if we can-
Right.
Get it.
And at least from that, the, it's not threatening to any of the other committees if they give us the information and we just say, oh, I know that so-and-so could help you with that, because you're both working on the same problem.
Right.
So it's a way that was less threatening than some of the other incidents that we had with that. Anyway. All right, well, if nobody else has anything to say, we could um adjourn if people wanted to do that. Somebody would have to make a motion to adjourn or to do something else, or to talk about something else.
No, this was a good uh, uh, groundbreaker. Um, I would just say, so uh, the outline of what's on the agenda for the next meeting before uh, before I offer the uh move emotion.
Um, so hold on, Mark, because we just had a walk-in guest um who maybe would like to make a comment, so.
Uh.
Would you like to make a comment?
Watching all of you live.
Yeah.
Having difficulty understanding, even seeing everybody. So I uh saw that perhaps you would be here until nine thirty and came down in person.
Oh, okay. Um, well, so far, you're GC, right?
It's correct.
GC Morris, even with the mask on, I can tell. So Erin, we have a visitor. Um, so far, we're thinking of talking about taking up next the village residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, so it hurts.
And the short-term rentals situation. I don't know if you have any other things that you'd like us to start thinking about right away of the massive list of things we could be thinking about? You got a good walk-in anyway, right? Did you walk?
No, no, I uh-
Oh, you drive?
I drove, yeah, I drive every chance I can.
Oh, God. Yep, happens.
I'm an enthusiast of driving. I walked here a couple of times today, though.
Oh, did you? Very good. Yep.
How far?
I live on Main Street.
Oh, okay.
West, West Maine, yeah.
Catching up on years.
One of the neighborhoods that's, you're gonna put on your
Yeah.
Very near future agenda.
He's at the edge of the RC district, sort of near the edge of the RC district and the neighborhoods, he's in the neighborhoods north. So, yeah. So hopefully you'll be able to come to some of those meetings and did you-
Perhaps, yes.
Did you find that you couldn't hear, it wasn't loud enough to hear, or it was muddy?
A lot of it was garbled.
Was garbled, okay.
Uh, the photographs of you speaking are extremely small and just up in the corner.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and then and then there's a lot of garbage.
Can you get rid of the shared screen and make the people bigger again?
That'd be very helpful for viewers.
Yeah.
I mean, it-
There you go.
Really wasn't focusing on the agenda sheet that you had up the past hour.
Right, right, yeah.
I think, I mean, I can do that on my computer at home. I can do this or focus in on-
You can do either, yeah. If you're at home, yeah, you can do, you can, if you can eliminate, if I'm sharing the screen, you can eliminate that shared screen.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I was watching it on our public TV.
Oh, okay.
Oh, livestreamed on the TV, okay.
Yeah, so you, that might be too, there might be just a delay in loading stuff, so you might just join the Zoom meeting directly. That might save on some, I don't know. I haven't tested it that way, so that might be another way, is you can just join the meeting as a participant.
I, I, I understand.
Yep.
I'm, I'm just pointing out the way I was viewing it.
Yep, right.
I think is important.
Yes, so Erin is there from MMCTV. If you have any advice you'd like to give her about how it would be better on TV?
Well, I, I think what we just spoke about, having, having larger views of each person that's speaking, and uh maybe just the bottom half of the screen being the uh the agenda or, well, when you had the map up, I guess it was nice to be on the full screen, because it was actually quite small.
I could have stopped sharing, yeah, that's like, that's one of those things I would have rather not be sharing, right, right? Right, but yeah, but just notice too, it's like when you're, when people are on MMCTV, we don't see that they're at the meeting too, so you're not really a participant of the meeting in that case, where when you join the Zoom meeting, we know you're there, we know you're a participant, we can respond to things, and you could make public comments, and you could, you know, raise your hand and join the meeting. I think that is a-
Or you don't have to, you don't have to say anything. You can just be a silent viewer, but at least you would be there and you could raise your hand and say, I didn't understand what you said or something, or-
Regardless, it's, it's one of my theories that you're getting less participation at your public meetings, because there are so many ways to see it elsewhere.
I think we get more participation, because we get both.
Yeah, we've had a lot of participation over the last couple of years, more by way of Zoom, because people don't have to go out and they don't have to get a babysitter and they, you know.
Well, I am twenty-five years outdated in my comparison, but uh it seems that's the dynamic in my-
Yeah.
Perspective.
Yes. Yeah. Want to come back on the planning commission?
Uh, it, it sounds like you've got a full board. I mean, you, you lost three people tonight and you still had a core on, I mean, that's-
There's a vacancy. Because it's a nine-member board now.
Yeah, there is a vacancy.
I guess that explains why losing three is really no big deal, uh halfway through a meeting.
Yep, that's right. So, so there's a vacancy available. Erin, hi, yes.
I, I just wanted to pipe in on what Mr. Morris was talking about. Um, yeah, so the agenda was up for most of the meeting, and um that's kind of a choice of whoever is presenting the meeting. It's not a choice of MMCTV. But um the, 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 the live feed is always a little bit grainy, and the particular agenda screen that we were seeing is very small print, so it wasn't really that legible. Um, and then it was up for most of the meeting, which means that what we were seeing was just a very tiny image in the corner of the um, the video feed, so it's kind of the choice of who's running the meeting on what you're gonna present. So, I mean, in the future, if you'd like me to ask you to take down the agenda, you can just let me, I don't, I don't know, I, I let you do what you, what you're doing.
No, that makes sense.
It's true, it's, it was, it was hard to, it was hard to, to follow, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so it's, do you think most people would like this screen, like the gallery of the people most of the time? Do you find, or do you know whether-
I believe so, and then perhaps toggle back to the- I believe so, and then perhaps toggle back to the. The map or the.
No, unless we're looking at it.
The, uh, a zoom in of what. Verbiage you're looking at and discussing would be helpful.
All right. Great, all right, thanks, Erin. Okay. Um, anyone else have any comments or does Mark, would Mark like to make his motion to adjourn?
Um, I moved to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I can't, we can't hear you. Are you far away from your? Microphone?
Hello, hello?
That's good.
There you go. I didn't move. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Dan Mullin seconds. Mark makes the motion. All in favor should say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion is approved. So we will see you all next time. Think about those two topics and what you need to know and. What information you can gather on your own and we can get started, a good start on them.
All right, thank you everyone.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks Gina for coming. You're another person we're looking at as a member. You can be on both the housing committee and the planning commission, you know.
I feel like I'm in college again. Ooh, I don't want to be on this and this. Yes, you won't be seeing me. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, I thought you had classes this month. You mentioned at the housing meeting, which I was also watching.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Finding your calling here, that's good.
Yeah, yep. Bye.
All right, bye. Glad you're feeling better, Allison.